We don't often leave the building to stay. Usually we don't see each other.
Start team, thank you so much. Today's government. Here it is. She said also the purchase. See how that matters more. And there are matches. I'm gonna do it. I think that's what it is. When we get the purchase.
Did we write up?
Fuck is good, we got the ninety days added.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. Amen.
All rise. All order, the Monroe County County Commission Chairman Sonya.
Thank you. Commissioner Winters, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes. Dear Father, we want to come to you, want to thank you for this day, dear Father. We all thank you for this group while we can try to do the county's business, dear Father. Thank you for the people that's come out here, Father, where they are going to want to listen and learn more about the county too, dear Father. Please just lead and guide all our directors and all our leaders, dear Father. And all these things we ask you greatly of our man, Jesus Christ, and pray, amen.
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 Commissioner Reynolds, would you lead us in the pledge?
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
President.
Here.
Here.
Here. President.
Did you have a side?
President.
Paul Westside.
Present.
Oh, Roger.
First is the minutes from June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sir.
Roger Thomas, Brian Harold, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Thank you. Next is our notary public applications. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
D.J. Siler.
Sir.
Second by William Cross. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next is our trustee monthly and annual report. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Roger Thomas.
Sir.
Second, D.J. Siler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is our Monroe County Finance Department. Director of Finance and monthly reports. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
David Winters.
Sir.
Second, Craig Miller. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next are quarterly reports, starting with seven twenty-two five. Mayor's quarterly report down to seven twenty-two twenty-four, ending with Monroe County Airport. Do I hear a motion to approve all of these?
Motion.
Sir.
Danny Everhart motion, second, Brian Harold. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Quarter privilege? Quarter privilege?
Okay.
As always, I try to thank all the staff who do quarterly reports. Fantastic job for those in the public who don't read them. Please avail yourself of the opportunity, there's a lot going on in the county, and these are very thorough of everything the staff is doing. And so, thank you, Mayor and your staff for a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there public comments?
No, nobody wasted.
Okay. Next is resolution number oh-seven twenty-two dash twenty-six. This resolution is an amendment for the Monroe County Special Projects Budget for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six to rebudget funds for ongoing projects. It's in the amount of one million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
David Winters.
Sir.
D.J. Siler, second. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next is resolution number oh-seven twenty-two dash twenty-six A. The following amendment for the Monroe County General Fund Budget and Other Special Revenue Budget for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six is to rebudget funds for the telco convenience center equipment grant. It's in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred seven dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Roger Thomas.
Sir.
Second, Danny Everhart. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next is resolution oh-seven two-two dash twenty-six B. The following is an amendment for the Monroe County Economic Development Department be made in the general fund budget for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six to rebudget funds for the fast-track grant funds to half-coat wood products. This is funds not spent and rolled to fund balance on June thirtieth in the amount of six hundred fifty thousand. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
D.J. Siler.
Sir.
David Winters. Roll call.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye. Aye.
Resolution number oh-seven two-two dash twenty-six C. The following is an amendment for the Monroe County Health Department be made in the general fund budget for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six, and this is to rebudget funds for the ARP Health Department renovation project grant. These are funds not spent and rolled to fund balance on June thirtieth. It's in the amount of three hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Roger Thomas.
Sir.
Second, William Cross.
Question.
Three hundred eighty-three, what is in this project? I remember we had owning in, owning out, this in, that out.
So the canopy, the canopy is no longer, they, they took that back.
Okay.
They're supposed to be rolling that money into this.
Okay.
So it's countertops, floors.
HVAC.
HVAC, those types of things.
With the canopy's out, and then that money will roll back. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next is oh-seven two-two dash twenty-six D. The following amendment for the Monroe County Sheriff's Department be made in the general fund budget for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six to correct line items in the original budget, error made during budgeting. And this is in the amount of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Adam Reynolds.
Second.
Roger Thomas, second.
Question.
Yes, sir.
In this, in this second with fifty-two thousand, four eighty-eight corrections off a security position, what is that?
That's probably where it's downstairs. I forgot, he completely went up in the.
So it's not a new position?
No, it's not.
Because we didn't authorize a new one.
No.
That is current, okay. Not a problem, I just want to make sure it wasn't a new one.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next is resolution oh-seven two-two dash twenty-six E. This resolution is authorizing a multi-year lease purchase and maintenance agreement for the Monroe County Beauty Agriculture Extension Office. And this is to authorize the Director of Finance to enter into a multi-year lease agreement within each matters, and the lease is not to extend over a period of sixty months for monthly payments of two hundred ninety-five dollars a month. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
David Winters.
Sir.
Brian Harold. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next is resolution oh-seven two-two dash twenty-six F. A resolution of Monroe County to adopt the twenty-twenty-five Monroe County Natural Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian Harold.
Sir.
Second, Danny Everhart. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next is resolution oh-seven two-two dash twenty-six G. An amendment for the Monroe County Other Special Revenue Fund Balance for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty twenty-six to rebudget funds for ongoing projects. This is in the amount of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Danny Everhart.
Sir.
Second. Craig, Craig Miller. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Resolution number oh-seven two-two dash twenty-six H. The following amendment for the Monroe County Other Special Revenue Fund Budget for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six to budget for what ARP funds won't cover for the telco convenience center. This is in the amount of nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred eleven dollars and eighty-three cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Danny Everhart.
Second.
Craig Miller. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, I just did one, based on calculations of everything we moved, we moved one hundred seventy-five thousand, seven oh-three, nine hundred ninety-nine, five eleven. Cost of the land and fifty thousand we put in last year. This project, telco convenience center's coming in right now at about one hundred, two million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred forty-seven, which is comparable, but a little bit more than the Monroe Center, so.
But we're possibly, from the studies, going to get a hundred and thirty-six or a hundred and thirty thousand back for that term line, whenever that mother comes in, which is not wrong, but still it's a hundred and thirty something thousand.
I just want us all to keep in our, how, in our heads, the total count, so that we
know where we're going and where we're headed. Correct.
It's about double what we had expected.
I believe so.
Next is resolution number twenty-seven, the school budget amendments. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Roger Thomas.
Sir.
Second, David Winters. Roll call.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next is resolution oh-seven two-two dash twenty-eight. A resolution to approve the city of Sweetwater's annexation of property into the corporate city limits of the city of Sweetwater. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
D.J. Siler.
Sir.
Discussion.
Adam Reynolds. Discussion.
This property, is it, is it somebody wanting to get inside the city, or is it somebody trying to expand this?
I want to get inside the city.
So they want to get inside the city, and they're inherently wanting to be annexed in.
Correct.
We're not actually, they're, they're not.
They're petitioning.
There's, this is a volatile part.
Correct. They're petitioning, yeah, they're petitioning for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Rins.
Aye.
D.J. South.
Aye.
Paul Westside.
Aye.
Roger Pauls.
Aye.
David Weller.
Aye.
Next is seven twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Sheriff Tommy Jones. Next is 7/22-29. Sheriff Tommy Jones.
Ladies and gals, we had the coverage against the county's deals that were still all formidable from like two or three years ago. These ladies are from TK Health that are here to address that. I gave you before the meeting started a file that has an amendment in it for a new contract. After Yale and the county attorney reviews this, if you guys are okay or agree with it, why haven't it gone on the agenda? The next month, the resolution is accepted, and they'll explain everything from there.
Thank you all very, very much. I appreciate it. My name is Sandy Barrett. I'm with you, with me today, my sister, Tina Smith. We have had the privilege of being local to this area, we're East Tennessee gals, and we are very proud to have been in Servicere County since late in 2023. At the time, we were with a company called Test Access Healthcare. We transitioned over to Turkey Health, TK Health, last year, August of this year. During that transition, it has come to my attention that there were some bills that had been prepared, but not sent, and that those have only been recently sent to the county. Those did not come from TK Health, they came from the previous company. But they were prepared originally when we got them. I do not, I won't speak for, obviously, another company. I can't speak as to why that happened. But I can tell you that we're committed to saving you as much money as we can, as well as communicating very clearly and very thoroughly. I think that the current administration would reflect that the two of us have worked diligently at that communication and to make sure that we're saving every penny that is possible. A certain member of your administration refers to me as his bulldog. I don't know if that's intended to be positive, I think it is, but it's because of how hard I work to make sure that every penny is saved. We sincerely apologize for the disruption in your budgeting. We simply didn't know, but we want to be a good partner and make sure that you have assurance that while we have continued what we do and there has not been an issue under our, under the current company, everything has flowed in a normal timeline. We want to make sure that you have assurance of that. So we want to be here and just stand up for whatever questions, whatever meeting we need to take for that, that's okay. That's entirely within your purview. But we also want to look forward, make sure that you know what we're about, what we do, what we've always done. We're going to continue to be that communicator, we're going to continue to be that responsible party. And the paper that you have in front of you is intended to give you that assurance.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I understood that the degree was that if you did not pay a bill within 90 days of receipt, we didn't know about the county, if y'all were going to cover that charge, is that correct?
That is not my understanding, sir. It is my understanding that the responsibility, according to law, puts it back on the county, and it is our job to make sure that it's processed properly so as to avoid that situation.
So what consequences are you offering to keep that happening again?
That would be above my pay grade. That is something that we can definitely discuss between now and next month. But that is not something that I am prepared to, to be able to do. It's my job to make sure that doesn't happen.
That is a conversation that we had today, and we started to see this email with it being a basic guarantee that we'll receive the awards within nine days, but no penalties if we don't receive it within nine days. And like, like she said, it's sort of, that's going to change from them to be approved. So that's something we're going to have to negotiate with higher ups.
We wanted to be, and we wanted to make sure you had something prepared. This was something that was also relatively easy for them to get out in short order, but certainly not intended to be a slave door.
It don't make any difference.
I was going to say, I don't think we need to agree on nothing till we figure out what the penalty is going to be. It's going to be two years for you to turn a bill in, or a year, like this last bill. I don't even think we want to pay 50% on this last bill. That's ridiculous, but.
We, David, you asked her a or two, and something we can ask for back to be refunded would be the administrative fees that was attached to that bill that you guys paid. So we're going to Yale to request those fees to be paid back to the county. From the amount of what that would be, probably 20 to 30,000 dollars, administrative fees on that. So, and it's something that we're going to ask for also. And, and this is not for you guys to vote on tonight, this information.
To vote on next month, and we're going to vote on the entirely, entire contract? Whether we award the contract again, or how's that?
The contract doesn't come up until December 1. That's this one actually comes up. This is just an amendment to the contract to give us food to December 1, so we don't run into any issues or two-year old bills.
I'll, I'll be interested to see how they resolve this amendment.
Yeah, and that's something, like, so we talked today about the penalties after the nine days if we don't receive the bill. And again, that has to go to, there is, has to go to, so that's something that the county attorney has to look forward to and get shape that back. So this is a rough draft, just to get all of us moving to the right way, so there is a timeframe now of what penalties will be added if it's not.
Any other questions? Comments? We'll wait and see. Thank you. Next is 7/22-29. Well, that was it. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Roger Thomas.
Sir.
Danny Everhart, second to adjourn. We are officially adjourned. Thank you.